Looking for my, where did it end up on my machine?
Will, can you have the site?
Yes.
Oh, he's on the other side of them, okay. So much for my paper of society, it's here in one of these. Okay, so it is now eleven past three on Wednesday, thirteenth of July. This is the regular board meeting of the Water Row Valley Select Board. I am Richard Reed, the chair, and today I have with me Margaret Turner as the vice chair and our newest member, Bob Priest, so we have a forum. Privilege of the floor. Please stand and identify yourself, madam.
Do I stand here or there? My name is Eric Levy. I'm representing the Citizens Recycling Group today, not any other committee. I have a few comments to make about the recent boom haha at the post office. So, yes, it's been four years since we've had any form of recycling in town. The blue bins have stuck around for a little too long, and they imply that we recycle. So, we haven't had recycling for four years, yet we were implying that we do have recycling. So, last week or the week before, we finally had someone remove the bins, which was fabulous, but people were complaining to Tony, to the town, I don't know who else they were complaining to. So, what happens when homeowners recycle? They think they're recycling. What happens is someone takes the junk mail and paper and they carry it to the dumpster. It's pretty heavy. Then, we get to pay for all that extra rate because our transport gets to carry it to the landfill. So, I personally feel that it's been a lot of deception and extra cost for us. We need to communicate better how to help people recycle our paper. I still get people coming over to me and saying, as I told Mark earlier today, I removed my paper to the recycling bins, we don't have any recycling bins in town. We've had a few hints and tips that the select board has approved a few months ago. Do you remember that? We don't remember that. Okay. You weren't there, who you missed that? Margaret, please. Okay, these were supposed to go into the water bill, but they will go into the next two water bills, as promised, and this should help people in town, whether they're homeowners, guests, whatever. It should help people figure out how we can recycle in a town that does not recycle. Okay.
Point of origin matter, we do recycle, we do commercial recycle.
When we, we do that, we know that, and when people say, when we're recycling, we're talking about household.
Household waste, whatever the formal terms.
We know.
So, just wanted to make that plain for the record.
Thank you for that, but I do say, when we talk at the committees, like, we do say we recycle tires, appliances, et cetera, but when people ask me about recycling, they're asking, where do I take my paper, cardboard, plastic, glass, et cetera? So, we want to say that again, these tips and hints will be in your next two water bills. Please note that. All right, so where can you bring your paper to be properly recycled? What's the most common way? People tell me they bring it back to their hometowns. If they go back to Massachusetts, that's what they do. If you don't have a home in Massachusetts or Connecticut or Maryland, et cetera, where's the closest place to bring your paper? Who knows? Yes, Hannaford. So, people, even last week, we had a longtime owner ask me, Hannaford? Where are the recycling bins? And I said, oh my God. Hannaford only recycles paper, aluminum, and plastic. So, it's really not a big effort for people to plan their shopping and bring a bag of a few recycled items. And if you want to know more ideas how we can recycle other things, I cannot say it to you at this meeting, you have to ask me privately, it's unofficial, I can't announce it. All right, so I just wanted to say, that's the update on the recycling, and I hope we have handled that, except for the transfer station. If you have blue dumpsters, we need to paint those too, or at least put up a sign that says, we do not recycle cardboard here.
Would the, that issue would discuss at the solid, at the municipal solid waste committee yesterday, I believe. I'm sorry, I can't see what the contact, Mike, are you back there?
I'll take, I'll take here that.
Would you please say what we're planning to do?
And we will be sending a memo to the select board regarding.
So, that's all I wanted to say, that if you don't recycle and all the paper gets into dumpsters, you are paying extra for that, and we don't want to do that.
Thank you, and these are going into the next water and sewer, so we've got to cover that. Is that Mike? I'm sorry, I really can't see.
So, Mike, I'll set a comment question. I don't notice that the blue bins were there or not there. When I get junk mail, I just throw it in the trash, I'm not bringing it home. I didn't know about the hair first thing, that's good information. I'm likely not going to do it, it's like a market basket. So, my issue is, you know, I would rather have the blue bins there to throw it away, and then I'm not wasting plastic.
Well, you have black, you have black bins there.
What's that?
You have black bins.
So, there's black bins there?
Yeah, there are four.
As long as, it makes me feel better not to throw something in a plastic bag, that now the plastic bag is getting filled and we go through more plastic, and it's just loose in a bin, like a stone in a dumpster, I'm.
Yeah, that is what's happening now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question.
Yes.
Journal scene, so the trash that you have at the post office, with people throwing their trash in the black bins now, do you make Tony take that out of there, or are you, because the?
Department of Public Works.
It's whoever's available to do it will do it. Sometimes it's Tony, sometimes it's DPW, but it is an employee.
Sometimes it's volunteers. Why isn't it DPW?
Well, and I've spoken to Tony.
It's a staffing issue, and whoever is available to take care of it will take care of it.
Margaret?
I just, I just wanted to point out that I have talked to Tony about this issue.
Margaret has the floor.
I have talked to Tony about this issue, because it was reported to me that part of the reason that the blue bins were removed without communication with anyone was because Tony was complaining she couldn't empty them. I said, Tony, do you have a problem emptying? She said, well, sometimes it's a little difficult to get them up high, but I can do it, I'm strong. So, there we go. I, I, the major problem that I had with this whole issue myself, aside from the people coming and complaining to me, is that it was done with no communication to anyone. And I would also say that the people who are residents in this town, who are the ones that go to the post office every day, have known we don't have recycling for years, so they are not confused by blue bins. I have a blue bin in my home. I use it to put in things that don't have garbage in them, or food stuff, or that kind of thing, because I have a very small trash receptacle and I don't want to put everything in there at the same time. I know that's not recycling. Anybody who lives in this town knows that we don't do recycling. Those are the people going to the post office. Those are the people, many of us, who walk to the post office every day. And I'm not going to take my junk mail to Hannaford. I will leave my junk mail in the post office. If I can't put it in the post office, I'll throw it away at home.
Okay, just letting you know, if you're not recycling paper, it's going into the dumpster and then it's more wasted.
As it has been, you know, many years.
That doesn't take it right, okay.
I think I said my. We're going to solve the problem later, I wish you.
Yes.
Thank you for the finish of all Hannaford, I did not know that.
It'll be in the mailers, there's a list of the half a dozen or so.
Like, I'm sure I, I'm sure I must have seeded one of the articles.
And I'm sure Hannaford is going to be very happy that people are bringing their personal paper to Hannaford and disposing it there.
They are a zero-waste company, they bring everything to Maine, and they have not, and I'm proud of what they're doing.
All right, Mike, you had a, if you can make it quick, we have a long meeting today.
You don't have to necessarily sort of the bins. The other thing you can do is that, in the back of Hannaford, in their loading zone, you can take cans to them, we used them, and then somebody else said, we're not going to do that anymore. Same thing is true with, with, you have a plastic, you can bring it there, instead of, they can bring it here. Same thing is true with several other things. Hannaford has a very, very detailed program that they have, that we were going to explore, that we can't.
Okay. Thank you, and just for the record, I want to mention that it was I who made the decision, and I apologize to my, my patriots here, compatriots here in the select board for making that decision without consulting them, because I didn't think it was a big deal, but obviously, that was not a correct assumption. I have to do better research and.
The communication part is probably the biggest part.
Yes.
Fact that it was done.
Yeah. Oh, okay, well, then I apologize to you now. So, I guess we're, we're good with that issue, any other privilege of the floor? Okay. I assume you have a bunch of people, I'm just trying to understand what. Terry, I think I know why, why you're here, is anyone else here for a particular item here? That, because I'd be willing to discuss it before we go through our long schedule.
Yeah, and I'd like to try to get to department heads to Dave as.
Okay.
Do him as quickly as we can.
Okay, I say, why don't we go ahead and, and do Terry in Stone Tower Lane, and we'll flip over to Dave, so he can get in and out, and then we'll just go back to the schedules. So, I should go into Terry, it's actually, we have an agenda item, Stone Tower Lane slash Fire Lane. And this issue has come up with regard to the status of that, of that road, so. Margaret, just wanted to recap what's going on there.
Well, it was a revisit of our prior discussion. Stone Tower Lane is a fire lane, which is a statutory designation that the Board of Selectmen can select any private road or, or any way. And in state statute, you're not supposed to spend public dollars to maintain private roads. There is a designation of fire lane that you, that it is allowed to plant. The select board went through the process several years ago. They held a public hearing, and they designated Stone Tower Lane as a fire lane. There is a section of that road, it's not all private. There is a section of that road that is public, that the town owns a piece of that. It came, there was a question asked about an access, a driveway cut onto Stone Tower Lane from a private parcel adjacent to it. That's when we talked about whether or not the town would deed that land over to the private landowners, not necessarily change the fire lane designation, but just basically split up the land and turn it over to the adjacent property owners.
And continue to keep it as.
And continue to.
Keep it as, so it's two separate issues.
So, there's two separate, yes. So, really, we, we got some feedback that the adjacent property owners didn't necessarily want us to do that, but now the Carlisle property has been put on the market, and so we're, that is one of the adjacent parcels. So, I want to give Terry the opportunity to come in and talk to you about things, about what to do with Stone Tower Lane going forward.
Terry?
Well, it's just that, you know, at the last select person's meeting, you had mentioned that you would no longer, possibly no longer plow. So, you know, I just thought, I just wanted to get the definitive answer.
Because it's going on the market. She just wanted.
Because it's going on the market.
The board has not made, did not make that decision. They, they are, it is continuing to be a fire lane.
It is, it is being maintained by the town because we have designated, a previous select board has.
So, we haven't changed anything with that.
They haven't changed anything.
I think we may have discussed some possible changes when it first came to our attention, but we didn't decide. So, there, there's no change contemplated unless.
It was, yeah, it was basically the fact that we had been plowing it for as long as we had been plowing it, we thought it would be kind of an inconvenience for the folks who lived on that road to suddenly find that it wasn't plowed anymore. So, we're going to continue to plow and maintain it as fire lane.
So, the question that becomes, are the, you as, as the, I guess you're the listing agent for the Carlisle property, whether or not they're interested in being deeded a small portion of land. Actually, there are three properties that would, would receive this land. That the town, it's a, it's for everyone who's listening, it's a, it's a strip of road, basically. West Branch is Stone Tower Lane from West Branch all the way to about halfway to where Terry's house is.
It goes.
About halfway, maybe about forty percent, forty-five percent.
Yeah, about forty-five.
Forty-five percent way to Bowler, to Bowler Pat, is that, that strip, that road is actually town-owned land.
Right, and I don't think any of the Carlisle's, none of the powers know what I want any part of it, do it to us.
Well, the, the issue is going to be, if, if there, we've had an inquiry about a possible subdivision, if someone were to buy the Carlisle property. And if they did that, we, we would, will have to talk about what the driveway permit would look like. That, that would be a consideration. If, if we turned over the land and it was a private land that they were connecting onto, it could potentially be just a driveway all the way out to to West Branch Road.
And no permit.
And no, no additional permitting other than what already exists. So, that's just something to, to keep in mind going forward.
But the subdivision wasn't related to the Carlisle property, it was related to the rental property.
Yeah, no.
No, the original request that we got came from another property owner, the past.
That's right, yeah, right.
But now, we've had another inquiry.
Oh, really?
Yes, that a person who is looking at the Carlisle property asked us what the process would be for potentially subdividing.
And taking over the piece of land that that.
Well, no, they didn't, they, they're not involved in that part of the process. All I'm pointing out is that if, if, if the planning board is faced with that, they're faced with a subdivision that would be going out onto a fire lane, not onto a private road or private property. So, and it's town-owned land, so it's going to complicate things if, if we don't consider the, just splitting it up and making it part of those private blocks.
And it can still remain a fire lane?
It could still remain, well, we'll have to talk to, that would be a decision for the planning.
Right. But there's no reason why it couldn't be? Theoretically.
Theoretically.
Theoretically, a, a town can create a fire lane over private property?
Yes, yes, you have that.
But as it stands now, it's a fire lane.
And it's.
It can, it can remain like exactly as it is.
That's correct.
However, if somebody buys Carlisle's property, and sometime in the future, a new party to, to request something, that they would have to be, come before the planning board, or before you, and go through all the process.
That's right.
But that would be sometime in the future, under a new ownership.
Correct. Yep, yep. I, I just want to make whoever's buying, make you aware, so you can talk to them, right?
Right.
Or anybody.
But there would be no guarantee, too, if a new purchaser that may be anticipating doing that, that would actually be able to come about.
That's correct, the way it's currently, the way it's currently in that, yes.
Right, okay.
And the designation of a fire lane was a select board decision, so that can at any time be changed.
I mean, this board has decided that they're not changing it right now.
Right.
Well, that's, that's, that's great, that's all I want to know.
Okay, very great, thank you, that's good. Everybody good? All right, yes, hey, somebody happened today, so.
Item nine C, another person.
I'm sorry, item nine C.
The vintage bizarre.
Do we want to do that now, or do you want to go to David?
Well, that's part of Dave's.
Oh, okay, well, David, you talked about the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to start with that?
Yeah, start with that.
So, approached by the resort, and you, you probably have seen all the applications.
They have not seen the applications, they, they saw the email, the initial email from Jamie, and they saw the map. They have not seen the actual application, but I told the board that Dave and I, guidance to the resort was that it would be a single application for the event, and then the off-site solicitation permit, applications for each of the food trucks, okay? Unless you want us to do it differently than that, that's what they have submitted to us.
No.
Okay. I think that's all right, although I have some comments about, you know, I had come in back before I became a selectman about the off-premise solicitation for food trucks.
Yeah.
And I, I had a bunch of items that, that I guess got ignored or whatever. You know, I thought there ought to be a fee that the town ought to get, I thought we ought to know about insurance coverage, if the town should be obligated or allowed to inspect the food truck for, to make sure life safety issues are covered. There should be a landowner permission, that we know what, where the thing's going to be. I think all those things are on.
We in.
I don't think they are. No, they are. You know.
We did modify.
We did modify.
We modified. What, is that what you just downloaded?
I took this off the computer.
Okay.
You just downloaded it off the website?
That might be an old one.
Let me, we'll, we'll check that log.
Okay.
Yep, but we did modify.
Proof, proof of state licenses, you know, that they have the proper licenses.
Yep.
And we do charge, do we not?
The off-site?
I believe we do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing that I thought, in, in thinking about this, is, I don't want to overcomplicate things, but I'm wondering whether we should have a, a large event approval. Basically, something that, that, that requires more than a venue has for either parking, or bathrooms, or they need police protection. You know, it's something that, the venue that it's going to be at to not accommodate without town support. And, and, and I'm thinking things like Special Olympics, I'm thinking like when Craig did the fireworks at the, on the golf course, maybe this event. I don't want to complicate things, because I know we're kind of an event town, but I, I, I just throw that out for consideration, whether, whether there should be some kind of a permit that the town, the town has to approve when this is going to be a major event like that. And I don't mean this one particularly, I'm thinking of the future. There is, state statutes that we can, for these events, we can compel these folks for police protection, fire protection, that sort of thing, but we don't have anything formal for, like you're talking about as far as large events where you get to, you know, have your input.
It would have to be, I think, partially not completely a zoning issue too, no? In other words, if you're talking about an event, it, it has to be the principal use or an accessory use, or a special exception to the use of that property for whatever that event is, and if it's a commercial venue, don't they already have parking requirements associated with a commercial venue?
Not on these one-off.
Not on these one-off, okay.
Then, that's not required.
I mean, Mark, do you think that would complicate life to have a?
Well, well, we usually, if it's a large event, we've had meetings with them to coordinate those sorts of things.
And that's what this is, right?
Right, and that's what Jamie came in and met with Dave, and here's what our plan is. You know, are we going to need police assistance?
I guess I'm just asking whether you should formalize that process at all.
Yeah, no, we have it in the past, but we can't, I mean, we can, we can make a form for that, a major event form. We're going to have to come up with a definition of that.
Definition, just so that we go and touch, covering all the bases.
And as rich as it can be is in the issue, because what's allowed in village commercial may not be allowed on recreational land.
That's right. Well, and that's why when they come in for the, and I'm thinking like the Black Bear Triathlon, some of the other bigger, the family fun fest in the fall, and that sort of thing, we have had coordination meetings for all of the different support, whether it's traffic control or whatever it is, but we could come up with an application for it. They, the, it is online, it's the old.
Yeah, and I just looked at his email, and those were all the old ones.
So, we will.
And no fault against, I guess, the update, what's it?
Well, we'll get it, we'll get it updated.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're fine with.
So, are you okay with the map, and do you have any questions, Dave, about what the event is and about?
I didn't exactly understand what this is.
So, I was, it was explained, it's a vintage bizarre, I guess it's been going on in Holderness, I guess it's a pretty popular attraction. They said typically over a two-day period, you have about eight thousand attendees. They don't expect that here for being this first-time event for this location. They chose this location because the cell service and internet was so bad in Holderness that none of the vendors could take payments or any of that sort of thing, so this was a really attractive venue for them to be able to do that.
Also, it was being held on private property in Holderness, it was not a town event, it was driven by an individual.
Is it crafts or, crafts or antiques?
So, it's, it's, it's vintage items, antiques, and the way it was explained, it's, it's very high-end stuff. You pay a fee to come in, a lot of interior decorators, designers attend this. It's not a flea market, I want to make that clear, but it's more very high-end type of items, very eclectic type.
High-end vintage antiques?
Yeah.
Clothes, probably some clothes.
Sounds like, sounds like.
Uh, every, they said a little bit of everything, so art, furniture, you name it.
And it's very popular, it's very popular.
Sounds like, and I'm taking from your willingness to engage in this with the, with the applicant that we're not seeing any major health, safety issues, as long as all this is properly.
Yep, everything's going to be in the field adjacent to the ice arena. Food trucks are going to be typically where the other food truck is, they'll just be off on the side there. We talked about parking, they're going to have some overflow parking in the old fifth stairway. They'll have that opened up for ease of access for folks. They do have work bodies planned to be on site, and I really don't.
Okay, now, I think.
See any issues.
Great, all right, so why don't we? Yes? You good?
Yeah.
Someone want to make a motion to approve?
Subscribed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else, Dave, you wanted to talk about department, department head stuff?
I can just do some department head stuff real quick. It's a pretty good medical calls the last couple weeks. We backed up, supported mutual aid to the structure fire at Woodstock last week. Our local safety officer, Cody McKay, started this firefighter one down in Bristol last week, that's got to go all the way through, over early November, I believe. I've taken some enforcement action, there may be some letters, office letters that you may, may have.
I'll PDF those to you, we just did them today.
In regards to short-term. Um, in regards to, uh, short-term rentals, there's a particular short-term rental where we revoked their. Short-term rental permit because it was not allowed use to their association. Um, we know a report that they were still renting out of there. I had a conversation with the owner. Um. Uh, based on that conversation, there was, uh, some issues they're going to try to work it out with the, their association at their annual meeting. Later this month. Uh, the, I guess there's an issue that they signed up for, uh, the casa makes you. Uh, sign a contract, so all of these dates look available on, on their website. And they've been trying to book those up, plus they've taken some rentals. Properties prior to, uh, their revocation of their permit that they were trying to fulfill. So I issued them a cease and desist letter. There's a copy there that says if there's any more renters there, uh. What the penalties are, uh, in doing so. If you'd like me to handle it a different way, uh, be happy to.
Compliance with our.
With our ordinance.
Men zoning.
Which, which condo association?
Uh, Village. Uh, similar to, uh, some enforcement action for junkyard gave the, uh, individuals. It's called junkyard in our ordinance, but three unregistered vehicles on a property, um. Uh, they, the particular property owner, uh, got a letter. Saying, uh, he's got thirty days to either register that or remove that from the property. Uh, we're pretty, pretty heavy into our inspections, whether it's building inspections or our annual, uh, assembly fire inspections. Uh, we've got the Golden Eagle, so we have, uh, Town Square, La Hason, I know those coming up and. Especially like the Golden Eagle takes, it takes a while.
Is Chris Hodges still doing some of that or?
Uh, yep, uh, between him, Jeff and I, uh, we're, we're tackling those. And it's certainly more than a one-person job to do the hotels. Uh, I do have a fireworks permit, uh, for a wedding on July twenty-third off the barge. Uh, for nine forty-five in the evening, um. Uh, it's only a thirty-eight shot show, uh, so it should conclude before the ten P M time. Uh, and unless you have any other concerns or anything, I'm prepared to permit.
Getting any money out of it?
Nope.
As long as it ends before the ten.
In addition, you have the traffic counts for May and June in your packets. I updated the sheet, uh, significant drop-off, uh, from prior months for the. You know, the beginning of the year.
Could you just mention it for the audience and for the record?
Yeah, um, where, what we did was, it's actually, um. The two months period, May and June, and I just divided it in half, but we have, uh. The counts were still up around fifteen thousand.
This is at the radar sign at the entrance at triple I.
Coming into town, yeah, just slightly less than fifteen thousand or fifteen thousand cars for those two months. Uh, our year-to-date total as of the end of, uh. June is, uh, two hundred and twelve, two hundred and thirteen thousand cars, uh, at that intersection. That's just, uh, inbound, not both ways. Um, and so that's a daily average of, uh, eleven hundred and seventy-five cars.
But it's obviously skewed to the winter.
It's skewed to the winter.
For now.
Uh, for right now, yeah.
And we can specifically break that up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll correct those numbers. We, we know that the twenty-eight, twenty-eight thousand plus. Was the number for that two-month period.
Any other statement?
Uh, no, working with the contractor to. Asked the, the contractors about parking on Salisbury Road.
I noticed today they were parking in the, in, on the, on the construction area.
Yeah.
The cars are no longer along the side of the road.
Yes.
They, they're complying.
Because they made some reminders, but we're.
Friendly reminders always, okay. We're a friendly town.
Um, other than that, that's, that's all I have.
All right. Is anyone here for ballot clerk appointments? I'm sorry, I really, I was, I.
Just for informational purposes, I don't have anything to add.
So the board, Patty, has your email with the list. Uh, and the request is that they appoint those people. Any comments that you have?
Uh, we tried to get an even number of Republicans and Democrats, just because that's what's requested, um. The town has more undeclared voters than I thought, um, but we tried our best. Um, I think, you know, slightly more one party than the other, but, um.
Can, Patty, can undeclared voters be ballots?
Yes, yes, so a number of the ballot clerks I proposed are.
Have these, a lot of these people done it before?
Yes.
Yes, same. Same, same group of unpaid, but very appreciated volunteers. And I think, uh, just for the record, I see, uh, Mike is, is still here. We had a discussion today about. Uh, the polling stations, uh, for the September and November. And discussed this, uh, later with, with the board and we're going to go with, uh. I think the school board would prefer we use, uh, a different venue, so we will, uh, see if we can get the convention center. For, for this. I just wanted to let you know that as well, Patty.
If we do change the venue, just remember that the online on the state election that has to be changed. Because right now, this venue as the school, as the rec center.
Okay.
That needs to be changed before the election.
Right.
There's no deadline that I know of, but just before.
Okay, Sharon, I think you could.
As soon as we know, as long as the council's decided.
Yeah, well, I think we've decided.
Okay, is that the vote? Is that, you know, I mean, I'm trying to get, the school board's in for the other, so I think that's.
Yeah, okay, yep, so that's what we'll do. And so it's a question of, uh, making arrangements, see if we do have the conference center. It seemed to be.
No, Tim said.
Oh, I missed that, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that, okay, so that's, that's the, the plan.
You're all in the know, you're off the first note. That elections, both the primary and general election, primary in September and general election in November. Uh, will be held with the help of.
At the newly renovated conference.
And just so everybody knows, the, the school board's primary concern was, with some of the things that have happened. At schools recently, very unfortunately, they think it's best to keep the general public away from the school facility as much as possible. And, uh, so they requested that we move. And, you know, the other point that they made was, we, we brought in a lot bigger. Okay, it's, it's over four hundred registered voters now. Is that right, Patty? Yeah, over four hundred resident, registered voters. It's not like when we were only a hundred and people were coming in to an hour or something like that. So it's a, it's a different scenario and, and we agreed to, um, to go ahead and move to the convention center at no cost. He's donating, donating, so.
Excellent. Anything else, Patty, you're good?
So we need a motion to approve those.
Yeah, to approve the list of, you know, being individuals, uh, on her email.
I move we approve the list.
I'll second.
Presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, done. Uh, shall we move back up to approval of minutes? Get that out of the way. I think we have two sets. Is that correct? Everyone fine with the?
Yep.
The two sets, um, a move to set the, to approve the minutes as, as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, financial update?
Uh, you have the, uh, financials, uh, in your packet. Go ahead, Steve, you want to? Talk to them and answer if you guys have any questions?
Do you want to start with any questions that I can go through with my folks?
I didn't have any questions.
Very great.
Perfect.
Uh, happy to report that June was our busiest month in terms of motor vehicle registration transactions. We already awarded eighty-eight in total, captured twenty-one and, oh, two thousand, or twenty-one thousand five hundred in total. Um, which exceeded our previous record, one of about eighteen thousand, um, monthly revenue for motor vehicle.
So this is the newest, largest.
The newest largest, yes. So far this year.
So far this year.
Which put us right on track to meet budget, um, for the year. So the financial statement that you have in front of you is straight through June thirtieth. So it's true, uh, if you have the year, uh, report. We also, um, we also in, um. In revenue for parks, I just wanted to highlight that we're slowed due to apparently the timing of the waterfront revenue. And the three-day pass revenue that was expected to, uh, to start coming in over the course of the next couple of months. Um, and you'll notice in other, uh, general government expenses. Um, you're seeing that we're almost spent year-to-date there, but I just wanted to reassure you that. That's due to us making pretty much all of the payments, um, in that account.
That would be like the Ray Center.
Ray Center, the W A I A, Shakespeare.
All those, yeah, stipends or whatever, yeah.
There's approximately twenty-five thousand dollars remaining in that account. Twenty-three will go to the transit services and the two thousand dollars that the bond is.
Okay.
We have. The fire, um, expense line is trending high. Uh, we're ninety percent spend our time wages there and eighty percent spend in overtime. So. You know, talking.
That's getting backfilling.
It's backfilling for, uh, E and T. Uh, we had two in E and T upcoming and also one starting fire training. So we've got a lot of new members, so we're having a backfill, uh. Those decisions.
You see, we can see us burning through that rate for the rest of the year?
Not, not at the same rate.
We're going to try to slow down as best, as, as best we can.
Um, just one other comment on a revenue line for the transfer station fees, um, looking kind of slow there, but. We did make a change in how we, uh, how we invoice for transfer station fees. And now we're invoicing through QuickBooks, which is, um, complimentary to how we invoice for everything else, pretty much. Um, and in that change, we lost a little bit of the, um, the collections process that we were doing previously. So we have about two and a half thousand dollars to collect and transfer fees that we're going to start to be a little more aggressive on here.
It was an aging thing. We just lost track of those collections. Back up, come.
Okay.
Is patriotic purposes, is that?
I think we have a separate, uh.
We've got a separate item for that, but.
We can talk now, though. Do we have a separate item?
Yes.
Oh, there it is.
I can just, I have one update in my department that.
Sure.
I just wanted to bring to light that we've, we've seen forty-seven new residents, um, come to town, maybe. And that's bringing our total population up to about six hundred and sixty-nine, um, total full-time residents. To last year.
Yeah.
Last year, at this moment, we, we saw eighty new residents.
From January one to June thirty.
Yeah, so.
So it slowed down a little bit, but it's still there. And it's still.
Still ticking up. Okay. Um, Brooke X U is the next department head, so.
Sure. So, um, we had a really great Fourth of July weekend here in Valley. Um, we did a big carnival on Packer. That was the first, I think, really big, successful carnival on Packer. Since we moved from Town Square and I think that was really well received. Um, it was a beautiful day, which helped us a lot, um, but I think that we'll continue doing that on Packer. We also introduced the Dunk Chain Event, which was, thank you, Rich, for participating.
Thank you for not asking.
Is it possible for the water not to be brown?
I just ordered from the Friday carnival this morning, um, so anyways, it was really well received. It was really fun and community, um, bonding. So we raised, which will come up in a bit, maybe we can address it now, we raised five hundred and four dollars for the Dumb Senzo Camp Fund. This is the, the, um, fund that helps campers of ours to attend camp. Um, as well many other camps around the region, so that felt good to, um, and I'd love to present them a bet as soon as that's approved.
Okay, we can do that as a vote right now, so they have a motion to, to donate the five hundred and four dollars that was collected. Uh, for the Captain Douglas Senzo Camp Fund.
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then we had the parade happen on the actual fork, um, in a very busy weekend hour, you know. As everyone did, um, and the parade was well received, um, also. The camps are going well, our numbers are high. They're, they're just a little shy of last year, um, which were the record-breaking year. But still, if you took away last year, we're still a record-breaking year, so, um.
It's going well.
The new number two.
We had, we had a really competent staff, a lot of high energy, which probably a lot of people witnessed in our parade. Um, so we're excited about that. We, the, if you notice, follow ball net was taking down recently. We are replacing it. That will go up, um, either today, tomorrow, or the next day. The port of potty situation, um. I have not been, it, it's been reported by, um, a couple of people in town that they were not being maintained. So I went to investigate and sure enough, they have not been maintained since June twenty-fourth. And within our contract, it's supposed to be serviced twice per week and they are charged a pretty, you know, in price for that. So I had contacted United and talked to them and gotten their service and they come out to services, Steve talked to them twice. Um, we are doing our very best to get those serviced and, um, you know, make sure that we can get that agreement. Um, made good or get a refund of some sort, so we will continue that and, and give you an update when we know what's being completed.
They'll be refunding us and right prior to the school board joint meeting, I was told that they're in transit. Um, to come and service the board twice. And I asked for a text message upon completion, so.
And, and however, they did tell me two days ago they would come two days ago, or yesterday, so it's been difficult to get a response.
Are they still in the same original places? They didn't get moved?
No, they got moved there beside the building.
Is that what?
We put up signage to.
Oh, okay, we put up signage.
Yeah, and just, just as a note, um, the, the two port potties that are placed behind the ship at the playground. Um, are not used as heavily as the ones that are located over at, um, the academy location that's near the chair that's there. Um, those were in much worse, um, condition and seem to be used a lot more heavily. I did actually check to see if there was that, that one port potty that someone had talked about, recorded.
I, I mentioned that.
And that's gone now.
Yeah, I think that must have been put out for the graduation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so that's all I have about the port potty and that's it. Any questions?
About the, uh, the bike path, the new bike path?
Yeah, we have the signs, uh, we picked them up yesterday. And the posts are in. We'll get the signs installed.
I just, I just done with that. So we've got a few more signs, I think, with, that are on, uh. And we'll get those up as soon as we have the place, I mean, in hand and, uh, we'll work on getting those signs up.
The ones we have are the directional with the locations on them, almost very similar to what street signs look like. Just waiting on the circle with the, uh.
The bike, the bike, bike, it's icon, icons.
I also just wanted to mention our balance bike, um, race rally, so anyone who's seen that on Packer field over the weekend. Well, it was big to do with, uh, little one-to-three and four-year-olds on their balance bikes, um, in the race. And it, we got some amazing pictures and everyone loved it. We have one more in August and so it's August thirteenth, so check it out.
You'll see the little kids practicing around.
And Tyler really goes all out with making the course with, uh.
Cool.
With a blue recycling bins and. With a blue recycling bins and cardboard and streamers and all sorts of stuff. So anyway.
Thank you for that.
But that's a new, a new event.
This is a Chicago, I hope you guys have that.
I have actually, yeah, walked over and watched it.
What'd you think?
A young man's game.
It's good.
It's a young man's game. Fragile bones.
Yeah.
Uh, we're in the heat of National Light Out. Uh, lighting.
Yeah, yeah. So we, so we're um, right now getting lots of sponsorships and Dave is really leading the way with organizing everything. And it's two, two weeks from yesterday. Is that right, Dave?
Right.
So it's coming right up and we're getting a lot of support.
So where's the date of it?
Tomorrow. The date is the second of August.
August.
Five to eight P M. At the CrossFit Bennett Sugar Shack in Thornton.
It's three weeks from.
It's just three? Um, it's, 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 it's um, been really well attended in, in the past. And we're hoping for even better weather here.
We're hoping to solicit any, anybody that has, you know, community tables, information groups uh, that would like to just maybe bring a table. Uh, if anyone would like to volunteer, we're getting a list for uh, volunteers to just help out. Uh, whether it's uh, and we're soliciting uh, the businesses for either sponsorships or raffle prizes uh, that we're, that we're holding. So for the, it's the last few weeks, we're getting pushed for that.
And it's free.
Brooke, that's gonna be here.
No, that's, that's in Thornton, um, CrossFit Bennett Sugar Shack. It's a, the three towns come together, Hampton, Thornton, and Lauderdale. And it's just really to um, strengthen the relationship between um, citizens and the police. And it's a national that happened from the same night across the moon.
Good.
And so I think it's the next day.
Okay.
Dave, are you, is there anything else that we need uh, for Dave?
The only question is I have Atlas waiting.
Oh, yes.
For fireworks.
Fireworks.
Uh, if there's a decision, I could let them know to pencil that in for.
Well.
Whatever Dave did.
Just we're waiting on Resort Association still?
I have a Resort Association for a meeting next Wednesday, which I could bring it up unless it's more urgent than that.
I, would it, would it be possible for us to tell Atlas that it, we're either leaning towards Labor Day or Columbus Day weekend? Would that be?
I think that might work. I can just let them know that we're deciding on those two dates.
And we'll know Wednesday.
The Saturday and Sunday, either of those four weekends, right? Not the.
Is that okay? And then let the Resort Association.
Yeah, also, um, and I mentioned this to Mark, um, Craig has volunteered to let the fireworks go off on the golf course. Um, on a Saturday night.
Okay.
Um, so, you know.
He mentioned that to me, but which, which the advantage to us?
Close to the road.
Well, uh, what's, the issue's coming forward is as some of the new properties get developed, we are inching on a three-hundred-foot radius from the bridge. So this may be the last year that we can do that without making some modifications to that plan.
Well, these are, what he was talking about was Class C fireworks as opposed to Class B.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, the Class C are fine. The social ones we shoot off the beach or shoot at the wedding.
Yeah.
Plays mostly off of barges. The Class B shows are our Fourth of July shows, those are the big shows.
Right.
And so that's, that's a decision that we'll have to uh, discuss or you'll have to make as far as the kind of show and or the location. If you wanna keep the same show, where are we gonna?
We're gonna move it.
Where are we gonna leave it?
Yeah, and, and I would just note that a lot of people enjoyed when he did those fireworks on the golf course a few years ago. And they were Class C fireworks at that time and people basically came out with their blankets, et cetera. The only thing he said is that, you know, food and drink needed to come through him. It wasn't something he should bring.
It was supposed to be a members-only event too, as I recall.
Well, a few years ago, it was, yes. But he's not, he's saying it would be open to the general public, yeah.
Mike?
When, no, I love Greg, Greg we've got. However, when we had those fireworks, there were people camped out on our lawn. There was parking all the way down to our roads. Alright. Now. I don't wanna sound like a white blank or whatever, but. You know, parking is, is at a premium already in the golf course area.
That is something you're gonna have to take into consideration.
But we're gonna hold it this fall on a standard, I think.
Yes, we, we can for one more.
For one more year, so.
Stay where we are.
Stay where we are for this year and then perhaps we could take Craig up on his offer in a year, depending on what we have to do with regard to the, to the regulations on, on fireworks and. Three-hundred-foot radius, is it?
Yeah.
The radius?
For the regular year, those are parked all up and down forty-nine, all the way to Triple I Road. I mean, it's even further. It's backed up. So I, I, I think that's unavoidable.
Yeah.
For a big event like that.
Yeah, we've always allowed it.
As a special, a special event and then uh, planning ahead of time and all of that, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we adjust for that.
Okay. Alright, um. So we're good on the fireworks, right? We're gonna, we're gonna hear from Resort Association.
Sorry.
Are you, are you?
Labor Day weekend versus?
Well, I think we wanted to wait perhaps on the Resort Association, if they had one or the other.
Do you have?
Or would you rather just make the?
I don't care. We'll leave it up to them.
I, I'd rather see Labor Day weekend myself, um, just because it's a little warmer.
Labor Day.
Okay, it's Labor Day then. We have anonymity.
We'll, we'll talk, is it okay if we take that to the Resort Association?
Oh, yeah, I mean, if they have a serious objection, please let us know.
It'll be Saturday or Sunday, right?
Saturday or Sunday of Labor Day weekend. Yeah.
I can let Atlas know tentatively that that's what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll firm it up.
Yeah.
And, and this is gonna be less than nine thousand dollars, right? Cause it's not the Fourth of July.
Supposed to be eighty-five.
It's supposed to be eighty-five, it's gonna be a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars if we were to have it on the fourth.
Right.
So that's just shows what the increase.
Wow, so it's our eighty-five hundred dollar credit that we have.
Yes.
Right?
So we can do it twice.
Both weekends.
We only budgeted for nine thousand, right?
Yeah, that's, well, and that's, I'm calling them in January and asking what the prices are.
Right.
Right.
So can we, can we uh, secure a date next year for the Fourth of July?
We can.
I mean, should we do that? We missed it this year for some reason, but.
Yes, we.
We should make sure, make sure we run the list before it's, we have that conversation with them.
We will submit a, we will give them.
We have to figure out where.
Make sure.
Yeah.
Well, we have to figure out where, but let's get, we'll be on their.
Calendar, yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll provide a deposit so that there's no going back and then we'll figure out where it's gonna be.
Make sure the check and that little memo line that says.
Fireworks, Fourth of July, twenty twenty-three.
Great.
We will make sure that.
Alright, so we're good with the fireworks discussion.
Good, thank you.
Right, um, Jim?
Yes.
Continuing with the department head reports.
We already talked about the signpost and stuff like that. We did, uh, we were able to take care of your graffiti request.
Thank you. We'll, we'll see how long it lasts.
We did double the camps.
That's exactly right. Well, we'll see.
So.
It is a widely used trail, so.
Um. As you see in the packet, we know that we're in a moderate drought, so.
Yeah.
We are attempting not to mow as, mow as we, or as short as we normally would. Um, you can see it's getting a little brown up there, so. We're trying, especially on Packer's field, we're trying to uh, not mow that as often and as, as short. Um.
And we have no restrictions, right? We took them off, we haven't.
Took them off, you've not put them back on.
We have not put them back on, just for the record.
To monitor it and come back if uh, the conditions persist or if this map changes.
Okay.
Uh, update on the. Trash truck. As you, as you know, the trash truck went down, um, prior to July fourth weekend, um. Right after picking up the Compton Center's uh, weekend lobster fest. And uh, we had to have a tow demand adjuster with a load on it. Uh, we knew just by our own inspection that the rear end of the, the drive axle, the, the spike here in the drive axle was falling apart. So it just kind of, like a grenade went off in there. And uh, when we pulled the drain plug, the whole land full of shrapnel, if you will. Which is not supposed to happen. So we had the truck towed. It wasn't until Wendy that they could look at it. Um, the rear end is blown. They have to rebuild it. Um, two weeks, I'm told, if hopefully so, but we're.
That's better than two months, I think.
Two weeks to parts.
Oh, okay.
Probably another week.
I jumped the gun, I think, I stick with.
Three weeks.
Three weeks?
Right now, we're looking at two weeks, which will put us about at the end of our rental truck that we are able to procure from Cleveland, Ohio. I immediately called the uh. The owner of the company that we initially bought the truck from. And he scoured New England looking for, he knew exactly what we needed. He could only find front house. He could not find a rear dome. He put me in, he put me in touch with the owner of the premier truck sales, I believe it was. So I didn't have to go through a sales route. And that expedited things quite a bit. I was able to contact an acquaintance at uh, Bethlehem. That up at uh, the landfill, who works with Casella. He put me in charge with the, he put me in touch with the area manager um, for Casella. And we were able to come to an agreement that they would be able to help us out. Um, and they really did. Some days we had two of their trucks and most of the time we just had the one. Um, but we were able to keep up. And now we have the rental truck and we are fighting back where we're supposed to be at this point in time.
If the rental truck has to go bear at the end of the month, we need a few more days to get to sell again.
Yes.
Yeah, we.
I will.
We've got an hourly rate. We've got an hourly rate.
Yeah, Casella's operating on an hourly rate and um, just so you know, I had, it's a little more to check in Belmont. But I didn't, because of the hourly rate, I didn't want them going to Belmont, you know, cause it's four to four. So I didn't want them going all the way to Bethlehem and then going all the way back to Belmont. So they've been very, very accommodating and they, they're really great. And I was able to get a overflow uh, twenty-yard roll-off. That we've got stuffed in one of our bays, which is actually the floor. So we spent two days hand bombing until the seller could help us out. Just uh, with the uh, one tons and the guys going around just trying to make room in dumpsters.
Cause I, after I talked to you last week, I went online and looked at use uh, dump trucks. There's, there's a lot of them. You know, a lot of them have, you know, different, different videos, but you know, Pennsylvania, South Carolina, they're all over the place.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So. Uh, still in crisis mode, but crisis is a very.
So the funding for all this is coming out of our?
Out of solid waste.
Our solid waste of time.
Collection, yeah. I mean, technically it'll be coming out of contingencies, but.
Eventually.
Eventually.
Eventually we'll have. Well, we added that hundred.
We add.
That hundred K. Inflation reasons, but fuel and fuel, so I. Guess it works. Alright, anything else, Jim?
Um, uh, the numbers as far as the, the first half of the year. We are tracking collection-wise uh, pretty closely to uh, what we have done historically. We're um, through the June numbers, um, we're looking at about almost sixteen hundred tips. Uh, we've been anywhere from thirty-two hundred to thirty-six hundred tips per year. So we're, we're pretty much on track.
The cost per trip looked pretty good.
The cost per trip is good only because only half of the uh, driver costs are in there. So, so that'll, uh, the, the number on that, uh, that for comparison is a couple of them. The average tons per trip is staying pretty constant. Um, and the uh, the cost per ton to deliver to Bethlehem is right on track with our historical data. So uh, the overall expenses are still looking low, cause we're only halfway through the year. But on the cost per, we're, we're right in our historical data.
Good job. Okay.
The transfer, we're gonna talk about.
We'll talk about that later, yeah, yeah. Um. Dylan? Uh, I can see.
Hey, you're there.
You're there. Thank you for waiting.
Uh, so break point season, February, and everything's going smoothly.
The drought is good, right?
Drought is good, uh, for a couple of reasons.
What I was gonna, I was actually gonna get to the, you know, the numbers. You look at the water numbers versus wastewater, they're actually the closest that they've ever been for the last four years.
Yeah, that's really.
Yeah, you mentioned that at the last meeting too, I think that.
Most of that they, they, yeah.
Right.
In case, you know, it's more of a full-time population.
Right.
That's contributing to it.
Right.
And it also points out that we don't have an I and I problem. So there's no infiltration.
And we haven't had a lot of rain either.
No, and we haven't had a whole lot of rain, but there's not a lot of leaks.
But that was impressive, I thought.
The county after that, though, is, is an interesting part, that twenty-twenty, that was the worst drought that we've had in probably the last decade. And our, our, our sewer numbers are pretty close to that with the rate all being much less and that. Yes.
It's increased.
Um, so it's definitely a lot of people here. And I'd be curious to see what the actual full-time members are, not just people that are clear full-time residents, but are staying there full-time.
Are you guys pulling extra shifts for the break point?
No, not yet. We haven't been, uh, we try to run it at a eight-hour cycle, just to try to save on the chemical costs as well. It is long, more chemicals as well. Um. All in all, everything's been going well. Uh, the only update that I have on.
Spit it out.
related to the plant is our F O actuator and that's.
Right.
That does uh, shift data at the third point. So it's gonna be the last day of break point that we actually get.
Right, but we always knew that was, yeah, I mean, you had already reported that, like, whether it's getting out of time, it's.
Right.
Between nil and none or something like that, right?
So that's the only real update that I have on that end. The, the sixty percent report is supposed to be coming out for our, for the plant in August. So that'll be here, hopefully towards the beginning of the month. It's more than, I guess that. All is good so far.
Did you wanna just brief them on the cybersecurity, etc.?
Uh, we had a cybersecurity assessment that is uh, the water wastewater side as well as finance side yesterday. Um, and honestly, with. Aging infrastructure, not only physical, but uh, on software side as well. There, they have a lot of issues that we have. It's a grant opportunity, I believe it's fifty thousand for water, wastewater as well. Um, so hopefully we're eligible for both of those, cause even for the next few years, if we can utilize those funds to protect our system. So.
And new control systems are part of the wastewater trailer plant project. But if we can update water at the same time. Um, it'll, that'll be beneficial. Um, I don't know if you've seen, but nationally, um, it, it's a major concern in water and sewer systems. For cybersecurity.
Thank you.
Do we have a date for uh?
Do we have a date for?
No, I don't have that for you yet. I'll, I'll get that. But we're still targeting sometime late next week.
So before I get to calendar, I see Mike and Patty left, but I still see others in the audience. Jenny, Reggie and Mike. Is there something you wanted to talk about? I, I've gone to listen to all this. You're, of course, welcome to stay. I didn't want to hang you guys up. You good? Okay, calendar review. So let's see, next planning board meeting is tomorrow at eight AM. Our next regular meeting is the twenty seventh at three PM. And then we're gonna have a special meeting tomorrow at two PM. And now move to the run for the following.
Yeah, I just wanna keep that on the calendar highlight scheduled for September twenty fourth. I have spoken with Lindsay about.
Oh, great.
The school participating. So as soon as they get back from the summer vacation, we'll start coordinating.
Great. I mean, I love to see all the kids out there. This year, I missed them last year.
Yep.
Give them the wave their flags and stuff.
Yeah.
Is there a form we have to sign?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet. So there's PA twenty-eight?
Oh, the PA twenty-eight, yes.
On second thought.
On second thought. So this is an annual form that you fill out for Department of Revenue Administration. Notify them that we do not utilize the inventory.
Okay.
Form.
All three of us.
All three of you sign down the side here.
We do not use what?
We do not use the PA twenty-eight. It's the inventory assessment inventory form. There, there are statutory allowances that if we want as a town to mail each of the property owners an inventory verification sheet of their property. You can do that, but it's a, it's a pretty complicated process to do because they have to list off all of their real property. Then you have to, you have to hold hearings with the property owners and and verify the information that's on it. And then, so a lot of this is work that your assessing agent is already doing. And especially now during the rebuild project. There, that's what they're going around town confirming property information.
How's it going, by the way?
It's going very well. They're, they're still tracking to, to meet the schedule we talked about at the last meeting.
Get into.
They're not getting into many properties. It's kind of disappointing. I think they're probably still around thirty percent or less. Yeah.
Are people letting them in?
No, they're not.
No, I mean, we only had like.
Oh, yeah, only about thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Yeah, or less. So, you know.
How would you know if they needed to get in or if they wanted to get in? Because I haven't seen anybody in the neighborhood.
They haven't been out yet to your, but they're, but they will leave a door hanger if you're not home.
Will it be on a door that I use?
How many do you have?
A lot.
A lot.
I never know where to go with it.
And the front door is never one I use, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, but they, they generally go around and they can tell a lot of information from the outside. But it's always better to, if they can get inside and measure this property. It's the most accurate for the taxpayer. We understand that people are still hesitant.
Okay. And you have an update when we can have our meetings back in the?
Uh, we're still tracking for the beginning of the first meeting in September.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. Anything else, guys? Good. Okay, so old business. Strategic meeting action plan. I've got a copy.
I did not put the copy in your packet, so we'll have to send you that.
Okay, why don't we talk, why don't we defer that anyway?
Yeah, we can.
Defer, we've got several things to get through. It's been moving on. Update the water pipe improvement project.
Dylan, Jim, you wanna update us on the meeting we had today?
Oh, we had meeting today with our new firm and contractors. We had some form of work. They're slated to start, but they're being done next week, early next week. But they're slated to start construction midweek next week. And it's going to be, I think, the estimated four to six weeks of pipe work. That's river crossing as well as piping up to the larger.
Will we be getting the fence in also during this time period?
Uh, no, that'll be later.
That's later.
That will be one of the last.
The, the trail has to be, we've figured it as well, so.
There will be some tree cutting that goes on prior to.
They're talking about, it's gonna be, but they're.
That's for the river crossing.
That's for the river crossing, but then now they've gotta cut the new cross-country ski trail.
If you take, if you take a walk along the trail from the bridge up towards the treatment plant, you'll notice there's some red flag and then you'll see, I mean, orange flag. And then you'll see some, you enter into the woods, you can follow the trees that are marked because they have large hangar. And that will be the relocation of a new trail. And it goes across the the West Ranch side lawn of the treatment plant. And then it enters into the woods again, and then it comes back up. Well, you're up there, Margaret, or anybody, you know, wanting to just look.
It's just going around.
Going around the back of the street.
Back, right, along the road, basically, and then coming back out.
It takes pedestrians and cyclists out of the water treatment plant.
Yeah, no, no, I think we.
Which is gonna be necessary because they aren't able to get through there when we put the fence in.
Anyway, right, and they'll need it for the winter.
Yes, certainly.
Okay, we were anticipating doing all that this.
Oh, it's all good.
I mean, the fence, the trees and all of that. Okay.
Verify to be in that he's okay. As soon as they get the treats cut, he'll start going in there and getting the trail established.
For the skiers. Great, great. And is anything else on the water line and stuff?
Well, we're pretty happy. I mean, a six-week conjunction period is pretty, pretty aggressive.
To get inside.
Inside the building, right. So, you know, people should be able to move freely. It is important that people stay away from the area as much as possible while they're digging. And one of the first things they'll be digging is the cross.
Yeah, being David's property.
On David's property across to the town.
To the, yeah. Okay, well, I'm glad to see that we've got a project going this summer, even if it is mid-July.
We are moving.
We, we got, we got that one going. Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay, let me flip down, speaking of current projects, road project update.
Yep, you have, you have the numbers.
Yes.
In your packet.
Yes.
The contractor got back to the engineer. They lowered the price to one million nine thirty-seven fifteen. We had one million nine thirteen available. We do have a road repair account that can make up the seventeen thousand dollar difference. So we recommend, Jim, you've gone through the, the changes? The major part, do you wanna highlight the major changes?
The major, and I think I may have mentioned it too, due on our little field trip the other day. The lane widths are the original plan for Snowsbrook Road all the way around for Tecumseh. Those, those were going to go to like a thirteen foot lane. We're gonna keep the original width, which is eleven feet. Plus, we're adding a ten-foot pedestrian bike lane. We're all over. The biggest change will be from the intersection of, right, right across from Moose Run or Lost Pass. From that intersection around to all the path, that lane, those two lanes will shrink to eleven feet as well. And then from there, from, from village to village, because we know that the majority of the underlying material is pretty solid. You can see it at Green Peaks. In fact, they crushed it to use. We had foregone the total rebuild. So the, there's less excavation. There will be no, there will be no road fabric installed. All the cross pipes are still going to be replaced. The culverts and the drainage. And we are gonna instead do a full depth, which is a twelve-inch replant. And then that will give us three inches of material to be able to use into the bike lane, pedestrian path. So, so there's some import-export savings, right? And some material costs that, that save, that there's some savings there. And that's what goes down to.
Right, what made that a difference roughly?
The, the rest of the project will still be boxed down.
The rest of the project remains where the road.
Where the road is in poor condition, right, valley road.
Yes, Valley Road, Tecumseh, and the part of Snows Mountain down to Village.
Okay.
And we are still waiting, as I understand, for the wetlands permits on a couple other spaces on the upper road, right?
Correct. So from, yes, from the least wetland impact is from village to village on Snowsbrook.
We are.
So we have that permit in hand. So the more, because, because there's a thirty-six inch culvert replacement, there is some incursion into a wetlands area for Daniel. And those types of things, that's a higher impact wetlands impact permit.
But that's been signed off by the conservation commission. It's with DES now.
Hopefully it'll let's.
And that's where we wanted to start anyway.
No, we wanted, well, we wanted to start village to village. In talking to the contractor, if, if we get back to Josh and start the contract signing, we will sign for the original bid price that they submitted. And at the same time we sign that document, we sign the change order to get to the one million nine thirty number. If we do that, the contractor, talking to their, the vice president of the company, he said that they would hope to get started in September, October. With the village to village piece.
Right. And what if the other permits come in meantime?
Well, if, if they have scheduling available, they'll, they'll do more than that, but.
What is village to village?
So, so the.
Village road.
Snowsbrook Road.
Yeah.
Connecting the two, so from the golf clubhouse around to by Tyler Spring.
Okay.
Yeah. So it'll be, it'll be Snowsbrook. It's part, it's a little piece of Valley Road.
Yeah.
And then Snowsbrook. If, if you're okay with that approach, now if their schedule gets screwed up by weather or other projects, we won't let them go past the end of October.
Let's go, let's get something.
Yes, well, let's get a contract signed.
Yeah. Well, I wanna lock, I'd like to lock this price in.
Yeah. And keep our fingers crossed.
So then they'll finish it the next year. And, yeah, they would finish.
The completion is for twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Of the whole road.
Initially, you know. And I did mention to them that if we could get a base code on, they might be able to do more than the village to village with the base code. But then they would come in and do a top coat.
After spring. Okay, I'm ready to sign.
Let us sign.
Okay, so the vote would be to accept the change as presented for one million nine thirty-seven fifteen?
I will make the motion to make the change to one million nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars and seventeen cents.
Seven hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy-five.
Seventy-five cents to the rate project contract. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will start that.
Okay. New treatment plant project. So you're the best for last.
Okay, basically, we're in the midst of or approaching a sixty percent plan. And everything to our knowledge is on track with that.
When do we think we're gonna be able to see it? Be the select board be presented it?
Probably the first meeting in September.
So September?
Yeah.
And then we'll need to decide fairly quickly.
Yeah.
You wish design.
Which design we want, right?
Yep.
Yeah, this is gonna present different alternatives with a recommendation. That's, that's the significant one essentially.
Okay.
We don't really have much of an update short of that. Everything appears to be going well.
We have one non-public update that's related to the project.
That's. Bob, Margaret, is it?
Well, I saw, I had some comments on your letter.
Yes, right. So we got other things to, I got a couple of other things as well. So do you wanna talk about the wig wag letter next?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's under the project, so I try. Well, let me just say, there's no, we have no reason to meet with the engineers. You guys are good. Wait, can we get the report in September? And then they're gonna present us with an option?
Yeah, and I, I think we gotta build in a little bit of time right then for us to absorb it, for, for you to absorb it, you know? And, you know, ask questions and, you know.
And whatever.
The letter sounded like, the letter sounded like, you know, the, the end of August, we get the report on September first, they're, they're starting to, it sounds like the next day they start to design the thing.
Well, they, they will continue the, so the sixty percent plan, when that is done at the end of August, it comes to you and it goes to DES.
Yeah.
And, and there'll be a DES, probably take two to three weeks for the DES.
And then we'll meet with Gil among ourselves with the engineers.
During that time period, it's all permanent.
Right.
But the, the engineers are gonna continue moving forward.
Has, has DES gotten back to us about the thirty percent?
Yeah, they're, they're okay. Everything, thirty percent is good. And that was more a fact-finding.
Right, where we are, where we need to go.
Where we are.
So we're looking at mid, mid-September.
The, the sixty percent will, will give you some treatment options. And, you know, and some more configuration. And, and then of course the ninety percent has got more of the nuts and bolts in it. You know, piping and how do we?
Right, but we'll have to decide, it sounds like mid-September.
Yes.
Where we want the plant located, what type of plant we want.
What type of plant?
And where it's going.
Where we want it located.
Yeah.
That is, that is a September.
Mid-September.
That's our big decision.
Right.
So I, I think in the, in the letter, I can mention.
Yeah, yeah.
About midway through the letter, you say the designs will be evaluated in terms of long-term operations and maintenance costs and the ability to adapt the processes to future town growth. I think we ought to say something about the, the total cost too, and the cost and the effect on the tax rate at that point. You know, we're not, it's not carte blanche, you know, that we, we spend whatever, regardless of cost.
The only, right, but the cost, you're, you're going to get a refined estimate, right? They, they've given us this twenty-five million dollar number plus contingency, right? That, that we've been working on since the technical memo.
Right.
Right? You're, we're gonna get a, because they're gonna, they're going to have a little more detail in the recommended potential options that they're gonna present in the sixty percent report. There'll be a refinement of the cost estimate, but you're not, we're not gonna be at the final number.
No, I understand that. But I, but I just, you know, there, there's several options. This, this was the Cadillac option.
Yes, yes, got it, yes.
This was the Volkswagen option.
Right, yeah, 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 understood. But yes, lifecycle costs estimates will be part of a, a very conceptual, but it will be part of the evaluation in the sixty percent report.
Yeah, I, I told Mark that I think the most important thing in the wig wag article is that most people have not been to this meeting and they don't really understand what the process is that you go through in order to get approval to build a plant. And I think that's the most important thing for people to understand. And then along with it, that's when you can say, well, and this is the point in time when we'll know what the estimated cost is. And this is the point in time when, you know, we're, we're thirty percent through and, and get a status update, basically. We're thirty percent. We're thirty percent through and all of the parties have approved at the thirty percent level. The next step is the sixty percent level. What that entails, who has to approve that. The next step is the ninety percent level, you know, and what's the time, who has to approve.
No, it's not very true.
Yeah, people don't understand the process.
Yeah.
And I think that at this point in time, that is the most important thing to say. But also to say, we really won't have a real cost estimate of how much this is going to go for. Until much later this year.
The end of this year.
Yeah.
Do you think maybe we could wait a month on the, do we want to wait for the sixty percent? For a wig wag article?
I don't see why we.
Well, people ask questions all the time.
Well, but I think I can simplify it just to the, here's the process we have to go through. Right, and, and, but not even go in, just say that we're waiting for the sixty percent.
And explain what that is.
And we'll give you another update as soon as in September, as soon as we can.
That, that makes sense.
And the other thing about the, you know, the. Public experience in all. The way I read that, it sounded like. We present the preferred design concepts. It sounds like we haven't made a decision yet. At that point, we will have made it.
You will have made it.
And so we're presenting the rationale for the decision we made.
Yeah.
So we need to sharpen that to say we'll be presenting what it is we want.
The.
That the select board has selected.
Selected, yeah. Okay.
In consultation with our engineers.
And the state and.
Yeah, right, right.
Yep.
Okay. Everybody good on that then?
Sorry, I, I have a water related thing for well four.
Ah.
We just.
House of Woods.
Yes, it's very impressive. Yeah, have you been up there? It's quite impressive. But that's not what we want here, right?
No, it's not. So we, we have a water engineer. Consulting firm that helps us every year with. The. Report that we have to file with the state of New Hampshire on groundwater impact of well four. It was a requirement when they permitted the well because. The, basically the Forest Service required. That we do this annual reporting and it, it measures the impact on the aquifer around the well when we withdraw water. So GZA and this Dan Tinkum have been part of our engineering team. For. Since the very beginning, when we started looking for the well location. So he knows exactly what the state requirements are, our permit and everything else. So we have these beaver dams that have been built, been building, they've been busy little beavers. Unfortunately, they're now sixty five feet from the entrance. Gate to the well and as Dan says.
Below it, right?
There's still, no, actually some of it is higher. Yes, some of it's higher, as you go up the trail on the right-hand side, it's actually at a higher.
That's our depot camp up that way.
Red feathered trail.
Red feathered trail, yeah.
I can head out there this afternoon and see what that looks like.
So they built an initial dam. That actually covered up one of our pizzonders, one of our monitoring stations. But we told the state about it and they said, ah, don't worry about it. However, the beavers have now added three dams downstream of the big dam. And those are the ones he's referring to that have gotten very close to the well. According to this, we could have some hydraulic action that could change the groundwater.
Infiltrate.
And infiltrate the well. This, we, Bob, you weren't here, but. Maybe Margaret was the only one here at the time, but beavers are the ones who caused the shutdown of well three.
Oh, three.
Back in two thousand sixteen to eighteen. So this is a pretty serious thing and as he says, we need to reach out to the Forest Service and. We need to. Remove them and we need to breach the lower dams is what he's recommending. So we're going to, I'm going to contact Bert Brown, the Pemmy District Ranger. Set up a meeting with her, provide her with this information. And what are you smiling about?
Energy charges.
Yeah, right, exactly. Your little C four, a little diabite.
Okay, and let's see what they say and then obviously we have to take action.
Yeah, we have to, we'll have to, we'll have to remove at least part of the dam system.
Yeah, it seems to be what he's, what he's saying here, lower.
But if you remove the dam system and you don't remove the beavers.
The beavers need to be removed first and then we'll remove the dam system.
Are they going to do that with have a hard traps?
There are, there are better questions.
Might have been corporate funds being built and there was a, there was some beavers and brought in a, a guy to get rid of the beavers and he clubbed him. In front of tourists.
We won't, we will not, we have a promise.
Yeah, we, we're not hiring that guy.
No, we will not hire that guy. We, there is a, there is an approved trapper in this area. We have used it. We used it for the well three issue.
Debo?
Uh, Debo.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he's certified with the Forest Service.
He knows what he's.
He knows with. We'll guess Woodchuckston. Paul and Jake will come up here.
All right, and just a very, very quick question that have been going on and the money for this comes from. We have to think about.
We have a water system maintenance.
Yeah.
Then this will have to draw upon. Yep.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other correspondence?
Uh, nothing. More concerned with direct.
I just, I had a whole list of things we covered, most of them. The only one I, we didn't cover was, just curious whether we've sent a letter back to Cascade Bridge yet. Because they had sent us a letter about the road.
Have, no, we have not.
We just.
Yeah. I, I actually talked to Dan before I left and, and told him I would get back to him. Okay.
Reggie, I still see you're here. Anything you like listening in? All right, good. So do I have a motion to move into non? Second favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we got.
You know, actually, we're going to take a ten minute break.
Okay.
Been three hours.
Yes.